Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the opening of our study session. So, Laurlee, please call the roll.
Stu Boyd.
Here.
Denise Chapman.
Here.
Amy Doran.
Here.
Dawn Kirk.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Alexandra Lessum.
Here.
Nancy Rumpel.
And Stu, would you lead us in the class?
Sure.
Right over here, behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Stu. All right, our first item that we need to address is the approval of the agenda for today, November fifth, twenty twenty five. Are there any changes to the agenda for today? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
I have a first from Dawn and a second from Denise. And Laurlee, please call her off.
Stu Boyd.
Aye.
Denise Chapman.
Aye.
Amy Doran.
Aye.
Dawn Kirk.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Alexandra Lessum.
Aye.
Did I get them all? Nancy.
Okay. Thank you, Laurlee.
You're welcome.
We will start with our presentation by our school, so we'll turn it over to Laura.
So as I mentioned before, I can babble, so I wrote something. Otherwise, it will take four hours for me to explain what I could probably do in one page. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board and Dr. Heller. I'm Adam Cohen. I have the honor of serving as the interim principal here at Turner Middle School. I am really proud to share a bit about the great work that is happening in our exceptional student services program here at Turner. Our ESS team makes it a priority to help every student feel connected and included, both within our school and in the wider community. One highlight has been their partnership with our early childhood, where some of our students actually go down and visit to read children's books to the little ones over there, which is pretty cool. It's a powerful example of how inclusion builds both learning and a sense of community. Tonight, I would like to introduce our ESS teacher, Sarah, otherwise known as Mrs. B. And our OT is not here, but also I do wanna share that Christine, our OT, is a part of this. They've been leading a hands-on project where students get to practice literacy, math, as well as social skills, all while having a lot of fun. I don't wanna give too much away, 'cause Sarah's gonna share more in a moment, but I do wanna say that I'm really proud of these students, this work, and I'm excited for you guys to hear directly from Sarah and the students. So without further ado, please welcome Markeen.
Sorry. Just wanna get the quick.
All right. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board and Dr. Heller. My name is Sarah Beech, and I'm one of the Learning Center teachers here at Turner. Several of our students have been working hard over the past year to start up a snack cart, so that they can sell various items to teachers. This snack cart promotes many important skills, including literacy skills, researching various items and prices, real-world math, communication skills, and collaboration with fellow students and adults, as well as problem-solving skills. The snack cart also allows collaboration between different special service providers, including our speech-language pathologists and our occupational therapists, to meet individual student goals. I will now turn it over to the students to introduce themselves and their projects. So thank you. I'm Lynn.
I'm Linda.
I'm Libby.
There we go.
And you can, um...
Go ahead and advance another one. Hopefully it won't.
Can I think one more?
Okay. Big, don't they?
Ooh. Is this the right one?
Okay.
This is our project, the Snack Dragon. It's a snack cart where we deliver snacks to teachers and raise money. Our goal for the snack cart is to raise money for school equipment and supplies. We will sell snacks to teachers because they work hard.
Um, is there a few things you want to sell to the teachers?
Um, I created three charts that gave feedback on whether our teachers did or didn't want the snack cart and what snacks they had and what allergies they had. So this is how, this is, um, um, which teachers wanted the, wanted the snack cart. Sixty-three percent said definitely, twenty, twenty-nine, twenty, um, five point nine percent, not sure. And then three point seven, or three point seven percent said very possibly no preference in on the scheduled days. This is our question where we asked the teachers what snacks they wanted and if there was a specific brand or a snack that wasn't listed, that they would type it in. And the most frequent, frequently, um, voted snack was assorted chips, followed by assorted drinks, then candy, then trail links, then food snacks, and then we have, we have all the different brands and non- and non-list options. And... This is our, um, this is our s- uh, question where we asked where, where, what allergies people had. So we knew not to make sure to keep those specific food items away from everything else within, within a small compartment. Most staff said that they want a snack cart or they would like it on a certain day. No one said they didn't want it.
Is it, uh, this is important to, to us that the teachers can have snacks they enjoy and also have opinions for gluten-free and nut-free.
We don't have a picture of the snack cart, but this is kind of what it looks like.
Um, they will try to sell in the afternoons once a month, so teachers can have an afternoon snack or drink.
There are a couple of different ideas for selling items or the snack cart.
Please.
Um, so firstly, selling will be in two weeks, on November nineteenth at two P M. Um, we, you are invited to come on, come, come, you are invited to come on the given day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. May I ask that, say that question?
Yes, they're ready, sir.
Okay. Any of you have questions for our guest, our guest, Stu? I figured you might.
I do. I know you told us your first names. Would you tell us your last name as well and what grade you're in and how it is that you happen to be part of this project?
Okay. My last name is Bill. You have an eighth grade. And what, and what was your current?
And then the other thing I wondered is why you decided to be part of this project?
I don't know why I decided to be part of this project.
Okay, that's fair. That's cool.
What was your first name?
Flynn.
Okay.
My last name is Jennings. I'm also in eighth grade, and I wanted to be part of this project to help raise money for school supplies and, and potential field trips.
Okay. Thank you.
Um... I'm, I'm fondly thinking and wanting to join because I wanted to socialize and help teachers and to make teachers happy.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice. Anybody else have questions? Amy?
First of all, you guys did a great job. I know that speaking in front of a group is, I get really nervous. So you guys did amazing, so kudos. You guys did great. Um, what is the hardest part about working together or the hardest part about doing the, the snack cart? Like, did, do each of you have, uh, like, the hardest?
Bradley communication.
Sure.
So the hardest thing, 'cause we actually, um, actually had this, uh, last year. We were trying to do this last year. We just never got to it. So actually getting to buying the snacks and selling it was kinda difficult to start.
Okay.
Um, my first thing is probably like trying to figure out like what snacks the teachers like and looking at the prices, then we laugh to figure out how to get the snacks from the cart and then game across the class.
Yeah. Awesome. I love that it's November and you guys are like here it is, and so lots of hard work. And I love this so much, like taking so many different skills together, and this is so cool.
Anybody else have questions?
I have a question. Where do you get the, where do you get the snacks from? And how, how does the money to pay for those initial ones, where does that, where does that come from? Have you gotten donations or what is that?
Um, we haven't bought the snacks yet, and I don't know where the money is coming from.
Maybe your teacher can help us.
Yeah.
Um, yes, so, um, we have some seed money, um, to start off, and then, um, we'll replace that seed money once we have enough profits. Um, so, and I think we've looked at some different places to get snacks, like Walmart or Sam's Club. Um, so we've kind of price-checked.
Hmm.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else?
I was just gonna ask what your favorite snacks are.
I like Pringles.
Pringles.
The, the, the.
Candies.
Candy. Somebody else?
I'm just gonna comment. On the nineteenth and two o'clock, Stu, I believe you and I have a meeting at that time, so we're gonna have to move the meeting to here, so we can buy our snacks that day.
That makes sense, yeah. So, thank you very much, you guys. That was great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are they seventh, eighth? What are they?
Uh, seventh, eighth.
Seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah, and the team's a little bit bigger, um, but yeah, they're really enjoying it, so.
Yeah.
Um, thank you guys for being here.
Of course.
Let them present to you, because they are super proud of what they are doing.
Totally, they should be.
They've, they've also...
Our ESS department, I mean, they're, they're top-notch. They're, they're really incredible, so. Thank you guys again for allowing us to present.
Of course.
Have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, um, we will move into our agenda. And, uh, all I'm gonna say is that some of these are gonna kind of run together back and forth, and I assume that that will happen as you're sharing. And then we will be voting on these all on the nineteenth.
That's great.
Um, at our regular meeting. So I'm gonna turn it over to who? Somebody come up and tell us a little bit about what we're gonna do.
Yes.
I knew that there was gonna be a, a different approach to this, because knowing that they all kind of hook together in groups. So like, I think the first will be four-one, four-two, four-three. Is that right? Four-one, four-two, four-three?
Yeah, 'cause those are all related to absences, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, and then it'll be all of the, um, AC ones, and then one of the others, so.
AC ones, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Heller, members of the board. Sarah Rasmussen, Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services. And this evening, Dr. Jennifer Dopples, who is our Director of Student Success, is going to share with you some revisions that have been made to our attendance policies. And the reason that, that these revisions were made was a variety of reasons. So, um, thinking about the clarity that we need to have in our policies, changes that have been made at the state level, and just making sure that we are in compliance. And so I wanted to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Dopples.
Thank you, Sarah. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Heller. So good to be with you tonight. I'm very excited to bring these policies in front of you for your review and feedback. Um, as you can see from the memo that I submitted, um, the grappling with student attendance problems is not something particular to Thompson School District. This has been a nationwide problem that has really, um, become very apparent post-COVID pandemic. And so we have not been ignoring the issue. We've been, um, working very hard across many divisions and departments in schools to try to turn this around. Because as we know, if students aren't with us in school, it's very hard for us to teach them, whether we're talking about social skills or academics, or all of the other things that they get to learn when we're all together. Um, and so we've taken this very seriously. Um, I did want to point out to you that we have some real celebrations in the area of attendance. So when we're talking about attendance, um, we use, since terminology at the state uses, I wanna make sure everybody knows what it means. So when we talk about chronic absenteeism, that's missing ten percent or more of the given school days at that point in the year. Okay? Um, those can be excused for unexcused absences, so it's a combination of the two. That sometimes throws people, because the old definition, kind of definition that we would use would be habitual truancy. And truancy is defined based on unexcused absences. So per state definition, once you have four unexcused absences within any given thirty-day period or ten total, um, that's considered habitually truant. So you could technically be both chronically absent and habitually truant. But the move, um, several years ago to thinking about chronic absenteeism in addition to habitual truancy was to acknowledge that missing school, whether excused or not, once you get past a certain point, um, really can impede the student's development. So with that setup, um, I did want to celebrate, given the incredible collaboration that we've experienced across our schools and our divisions and our departments, um, that we have lowered our chronic absenteeism rate from twenty-nine point five percent in twenty-twenty-two to twenty-five percent for the last two years. We've also improved our daily attendance rate, um, to ninety-two percent, so that's the percentage of students showing up each day, right? Um, and we've lowered our truancy rate to two point six percent. So we perform, we outperform the state in all areas and perhaps maybe a neighboring school district as well. Um, and however, um, it's not good enough. Uh, so for instance, we've held steady at twenty-five percent chronic absenteeism for two years in a row. Uh, in addition, our kindergarten and our upper high school grade levels are particularly impacted. Um, the most recent data that I was able to pull for you is that our kindergarten chronic absenteeism rate for last school year was nineteen point five percent of our students were considered chronically absent. And in eleventh grade, thirty-seven point six percent of our students were considered chronically absent. And I would add to that, that when we look closely at the data, we see that most students who hit that chronic absenteeism point just keep on going. So they likely have missed far more than ten percent of the school year, unfortunately. Um, so because of these, um, numbers, uh, we engaged in a year-long learning cohort held by CDE on reducing chronic absenteeism, which was a really wonderful project to be part of. It involved folks from multiple divisions as well as, um, folks from our buildings. And so we had a mix of licensed staff, classified staff, principals, assistant principals, um, people in learning services, so on and so forth. Um, and out of that, um, I proposed a TENS initiative and was really, um, so, um, proud to be given support to engage in that initiative from several people in this room. Um, and so we have kicked off a district-wide positive attendance campaign this year. Um, we have improved, uh, documentation to make it easier for folks to, to keep track of. Things are automated that people, we didn't realize could be automated, to try to reduce workload for people so that they could be focused on kids and families of, and not on trying to get something into a contact log. Um, we've updated our workflows for our school and district staff to clarify their roles and actions in support of the level. And we've also formed the first-ever district-wide chronic absenteeism reduction team. And we had our first meeting just a couple of weeks ago. Again, it is a diverse group of stakeholders from across the district, and, um, the first meeting was, was fantastic. However, out of that project, we also, um, felt the need to update our board policies to support this work. So that's what you see in front of you. And I would like to highlight, as you saw in the memo, this was a truly collaborative effort. We have friends from instructional technology services, um, learning services, building staff, um, a wide, uh, group of people to look at what needed to be updated in board policy. And once we had ideas, we had them review it and give feedback to make sure that we are improving clarity instead of unintentionally making it worse. And so what you will see in the, um, proposed policy are improvements in the area of defining absent types, um, clearly defining chronic absenteeism and habitual truancy, as I explained to you all. What are our policies around makeup work when students, um, miss school? Uh, what do we, what is best practice and what did we, we believe in Thompson School District about consequences for school absences? And, um, the roles and responsibilities of everyone involved, um, in supporting students getting to school. Um, and so, uh, as you could see when you looked at the, um, the documents I sent over to you, the reorganization to make sure that these, um, policies read, uh, were simple to read and clear, was so extensive, I just ended up redlining the whole thing. Um, it was, it was just impossible to follow otherwise. So I, I, I hope that that worked for you all. Um, and you can see that, um, we took the, um, two current policies and one current regulation, and our proposal is to replace these with one policy and one exhibit. So that involves some reorganizations, I'm sure you noticed, because the things that are now in the exhibit were kind of tucked into a policy. We collapsed two policies together. Um, we moved some things that weren't regulation into the policy. So all of that reorganization is intended to make this easier for people to read and follow. Um, I wanted to highlight just a couple of things before we move to questions, if that's okay, from the board. Um, so, uh, one of the places we looked to, um, update this policy is we always check the CASB model policies. And, um, they also have, um, the, uh, uh, the excused absences, like the definitions of that is within the policy instead of a separate regulation. Um, and we felt that that provided clarity as well. We have that additional piece, that exhibit of the allocation of school, um, attendance responsibilities. That is not part of CASB, however, we've had that in our board policy and has been very helpful, um, to school staff and building staff and, uh, building administrators and district staffs on how, and how we work together. So we wanted to preserve that while also updating it, because, um, we noticed that it was not clear how our district staff would support this. So you'll see, we moved that into an exhibit, um, and also added a little bit more to that. Um, in the excused absence list, I just wanted to point out a couple of things for you to, to, um, note. So, um, we wanted to be much clearer about excused absences that are required under law to be excused. We did not feel that the, first of all, we were missing some in the old policy, but it also wasn't clear. So particularly, if you look at items number three, four, and twelve, those are items that are coming from statute that we wanted to make sure were clear. Um, we also tried to, um, make sure it's clear that medical absences needed to include mental health as a medical issue. Um, that's a, a practice that we've had in Thompson School District for a couple of years, but it was not clear in policy, at least that was our feeling. Um, number two on the excused absence list, um, that probably is, that might be one of the bigger changes that you'll see in the policy, um, really being very clear about what a free-range absence is and which of those will be excused. And so that comment you see in there about items, uh, of a serious nature, um, we put that in there to support our building administrators, um, so that they don't feel that any time a family happens to tell them they're going to be absent at a time, that they're then kind of required to excuse it. We wanted to give them a little more parameters on that without, you know, being so tight that we weren't being aware of unique circumstances. Um, number six on the list, um, in our previous board policy, we had expulsion as unexcused and it's required to be excused, so we moved that. Um, then further down in the policy, um, in the, um, you'll notice that we added some very clear language that when students hit chronic absenteeism and habitual truancy, that unattained support plan is required. And we are, um, we developed one with, um, the same people who worked on all this, that schools are starting to use, um, right now, and it's going very well. So that's not something that's optional. Once students hit a certain number of absences, we need to be meeting with the family and understanding how we can help. So that is our, that has been added to the policy and much more clearly, we believe. Um, skip down here. Uh, we did wanna clarify, we did not feel that the language around how truancy is handled and who handles it was clear. It was kind of scattered across the different policies. So, um, we clarified language both in the policy and in the district responsibilities and the exhibit that you'll see. On the makeup work, um, we need to be providing students with makeup work when they're absent, so we felt it was important to have that in board policy, um, so that that would be clear to everyone involved. Um, you'll also see that we provided some clarity around how we think about tardies, um, as well as trying to take things out of here that tied our hands in coming up with good standard operating procedures, but not leaving things so general that there was no teeth in this to support people in the work. Um, so those are just some of the things I wanted to call out, um, and hopefully answer some of the questions that were submitted. Um, what, what questions do folks have?
Questions? Let's start. Amy, you wanna start with this?
Um, I'm having some computer issues, so come back to me, please.
Okay, you're, okay. We'll come back to her. Stu?
Have, have we all already rolled out this new program, this new look, uh, based on the policies? Or will that have to wait until we approve the policies?
So we were pretty strategic with identifying the changes that could take place without, changes to board policy.
Changing the policy.
And I got wonderful support from senior leadership and others to make that happen. And then, um, for instance, communication to family about if we're gonna change what's considered excused and unexcused. We've not taken that step because we did not have your approval to make those changes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alexandra?
So if a student has been labeled as chronically absent, is there a way for them to become, to lose that label?
Not exactly. That's a, that's a great question.
Okay.
Um, so what we, we have, some of us felt like our parents and guardians didn't really understand that once you hit a certain level, the state considers your, your child to be chronic absen-, chronically absent and habitually truant. So that's one of the things that we've already started communicating more clearly about, is that when you hit these levels of absence, you, you do end up with that designation, like, it's federally designated in to the state, right? And so, um, what we wanted to focus on is making sure that was clear and immediately accompanying that with the support plan. So if the focus is on creating the support plan and that the students were off the support plan, regardless of, of according to the state, kind of once you hit ten unexcused, you kind of can't undo that. However, if you think about chronic absenteeism, it is possible to change that, because if you start attending, then there's more and more days and your percentage of absences will reduce, if that makes sense. So it's a little bit different if we're talking about habitual truancy or chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, so part of why I ask is I have a student who was designated as chronically absent early in the year, largely because of missing a couple of days because of the Jewish holidays. And he was sick, and then we went on a trip. And so he hit, we were at that ten percent, and so, you know, got notification that, so on and so forth. And I have no concerns about his attendance. Um, and so that's why I was wondering now, like, we're... Um and so that's why I was wondering now, like we're in this thing and it says we have to have, you know, medical documentation for any other absences or principal, you know, s- uh approval for any absences or so on and so forth. And so that's why I was wondering if there are situations like that, where it's really not a attendance issue, it's just a thing that happens.
Right.
If if there's any wee way to.
Yeah, I th- I think that's a, that's good feedback to have because our intention is that um through the support plan meeting, w- in some circumstances, that type of situation would be very clear that really we just needed to have better communication. Kiddo's doing fine, let's check in two months from now to make sure that missing X number of days of school isn't causing some sort of impact that we need to help with. And otherwise, it's not a priority situation.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I mean, 'cause yeah, he missed five days before by September twenty something and has not missed two since.
Right.
Um so anyhow, I don't, it doesn't need to be about me, but I think that there's, I think that's something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 'cause you, 'cause with chronic absenteeism, you you can roll off of it.
Right.
So we want to make sure it's clear um in uh the communication and the support planning.
Okay.
For people, so that's great feedback, I think, for sure, um yeah.
Do we have um any community members who are impacted by the policy at all?
Um yeah, so we, so during the learning cohort, one of the um strategy that we used was we did uh empathy interviews. And we interviewed students, families, staff, um a whole, it was a group of like ten of us, um and all in different roles, right? Um and so we interviewed kiddos who had grade attendance and families who either kids have grade attendance and kiddos who are struggling. Um we did a panel, we did a variety of things to try to get other stories in and then um use that information to help inform the attendance initiative and the policies.
So I have some real concerns over the inequities that this causes.
And what?
The inequities that this causes.
Oh.
Hmm.
Um I will tell you that the parts that were acceptable to use were already used for my family. And I was sobbing, talking to people I know and trust who were kind in those conversations because of the templates, because of the the next level, the designation, the what it meant. Um all for issues that have existed for years and that have been well documented and are well documented. And so to be like bottomed out for something that I thought we had worked through is really hard for me. And I'm having a hard time even in this conversation right now because I, while I, like I I understand how important it is and we're trying to close the gap, what what happened to me was devastating. And I am in no position to feel that way, right? There's no reason that I, of all people, would feel that way. I have fifty people I could call to say, hey, help me, help me be less worried about this. And I was terrified. The student that I have who is impacted by this is devastated by her reality, let alone by what it means to other people. She is already struggling with the idea that she impacts other people. She realizes that she stands out, that she's different, that she can't go to school, that she's missing class, that she's late, et cetera, et cetera. Those things are devastating for her. And I have other kids who would take that devastation and say, why would I ever go back? And the last time we visited this policy, that was a conversation we had, is making sure that we were really removing the, lowering that waterline to say, let's not make this pressure filled, let's talk about communication partner and how can we help you. I feel like a lot of that's inherent and a lot of it is still there and it was devastating. Um and so I'm, I am still really, really concerned about it as a, as somebody who's impacted. And I I really do hate the idea that anyone would feel the way I feel who doesn't have the resources to go to. Um and frankly, like staff felt like they didn't know what to tell me because they had canned answers, right? Like they're they're unaware of of some of these documents and some of these things that exist. So they were giving me the canned answers. And these very kind, well-intentioned humans told me things that were devastating. And again, that's happening with a lot of parents. Um it is obscene to me that we would put a requirement on people that would cost them money um in order for them to be able to access their education, right? To be able to go get a doctor's notice, no easy feat. It costs money, it's not accessible, it's not timely. Um I understand we want to make sure that we're not risking other students, but frankly, um to put a bar like that on this is really hard for most families. And if they're struggling already, um having to prove it more is not gonna help people f- engage with the process the way we're intending to. And so as somebody who was really impacted by this, this is a place where I think our intentions and our impact are are still aren't closed and that's what worries me. And like I hear your g- good intentions, I want that too. But like I read this and I saw, oh, good, the judge is gonna be involved and I almost just left the room. That's like, I'm not okay right now. And I don't want our families to feel not okay. And so um I do understand that some of this is legally required, but everything that's not, I'd still like for us to be thoughtful of, um because k- kids who are not engaged always have a barrier. And communication and understanding what they need is critical. And I think that it's really, really tough when people see the bars that exist in this, that, oh my gosh, and if I get, if I engage with the process, now I have to go to the doctor and I had, now I have to, like I could be going to court, right? That's scary. Those things are very scary. And so um, you know, I I wish I felt better about this 'cause again, I do see the good intentions. I know it, how important it is. Um but I also kn- like know a lot of people who who have th- these challenges of more. And often, right, in the family system, this leaves them even, it leaves them even further connected. And we, and our staff sometimes doesn't, we don't always have everybody fully resourced, which I realize is what we're trying to do. I really do understand that, but I'm just, I'm looking at this going, I I really struggle with it and I feel sick. And I hate that because I know how hard you worked at it and I appreciate what you're trying to do. And it is still like really hard for me, really, really hard. So I don't know what we do with that, but I'm worried that we're not accounting for the people who struggle the most in this.
Well, I thank you for sharing that. And if there's a particular situation where something regarding attendance was, you believe is not handled properly, I would always it up, take a personal phone call, so, um but uh.
Oh, you know it was. You know it was. I mean, everybody was great. Um the thing is though, is that like I had to talk to multiple people.
Mm-hmm.
And like there were people who were like, I don't, I, well, that's just that. Like I can't do anything about that. And I'm like, uh, what? What does that mean, right? And so like luckily I knew the next person to call, the next person to call, but
Right.
I have that. Our our families don't always. I wanna make sure that the the first call is always that best call.
Yeah.
And I do realize that that's what you're trying to do here, I do.
Mm-hmm.
It's just this was, this one's a tough one because no matter what we do, it is addressed, it is where we cap, we catch a lot of inequities that exist in our society. And frankly, it's hard to write a a policy that doesn't catch all that stuff and still leave the people who are struggling feeling like, well, why even bother?
I, it might be helpful to point to folks at the um bottom of the second page. There's some careful language in this section about a documentation, um to try to provide some clarity, but also some flexibility a- as what, in regards to some of the situations you may be referring to. So just to note, it says, as applicable, the district will require suitable proof regarding the above exceptions, including written statements from medical sources. So we're able to define what the suitable proof is. Um and that that is within our control. So that that's an example of a sentence where we're trying to feel clear without backing ourselves into a corner that we end up with inequities like you're describing. Um and again, you'll see that second sentence has that same phrase. We're required to submit su- suitable proof for all absences for excuses. So for instance, students um can um get the excuse from the health office aide or a school nurse as well. So so there is, um, this is a little tighter than it has been to, I mean, to to be perfectly frank, it is tighter.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
With also trying to be thoughtful to allow for um conversations to ha- occur that, like you're describing. So I wanted to point that out. I also do think that um part of what you may be referring to actually came up in our first ever district chronic absenteeism reduction team meeting, which um we went through an exercise um using uh materials from attendance works um to identify the p- areas of priority need. And um what was identified was um positive engagement strategies um as well as alignment and capacity building. And so I think that what you are describing, and I'm I'm sorry for the distress that was caused, and this gr- group of people through a very different process, um identified the same needs, right? That when a family is struggling, how are we meeting them there in a way that is consistent enough across our schools that that people have what they need, but not so tight that um people do not feel supported? So th- that was exactly, those were exactly the areas that came out of the um the assessment that they engaged in two weeks ago.
I appreciate that. I mean, I think um having that ripple through and having those constant like touchstones is helpful because in in practice, it's where some of these things fall apart. And like I I h- I hear you on the wording, like I appreciate the nuances in that. Um and then I think about this well-intentioned person who didn't get the nuance 'cause they didn't have enough background to really know that. And so thank you for letting me share all that. Um I I thi- I, you know, I I've I've struggled with this since since my kids started struggling in school. And attendance was one of the reasons I, what two of my kids gave for, why am I even doing this? If I'm gonna be in trouble, you know, for any way, I wanna give up. And I wanna make sure that we are, we're really helping people along. And I do see the work that you've done in that. I think making sure that staff is resourcing that. Because on the flip side of this, I don't wanna lose sight in what that means to them too. I I know that um they're just trying to get the work done, they gotta get this done. So I I hear all that and closing that gap is helpful. Um I, there is one other thing, which is the makeup work.
Mm-hmm.
And I totally get where it's coming from. So I, uh but I will say that if somebody's missed school so often, they're scrambling and it's not just one class, when they're in the secondary. And so um I also see the in, how that can be really challenging the more, the more behind a student is, the harder that is. Um I understand the impact it has on staff, but this is another place that's strikes me as the big, a place where it can get really inequitable. 'Cause if I get, you know, all that work and I have just a few days to get it done when I'm already sick or when I've already been dealing with something else, it can be really hard. So um I don't wanna lose sight on what all of this means and how helpful it is to staff at all. I I do, I get that, so I'm just kind of throwing some of that out there to maybe think about what we do next. Not necessarily in the p- policy necessarily, but in that support and resources. That's where I think we we can really shine, is making sure that people understand the nuance and that what they can do and who they can talk to, who can help them problem solve when they don't know and they just want the kid to show up and why aren't they showing up? So, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for sharing that.
Did you miss anything?
Um how do we make parents or these policy? I mean, I don't know, we just finished for fifteen years in the district and we've gotten some of the letters. But how are we stressing the importance of attendance kind of overall in the messaging that we do? The generation working with our parents, maybe. I didn't know I was a, or we were a problem until we got the letter. Like, and so, um, excuse your kid, um, that isn't necessarily correct. So how can we make sure that people understand the rules of the game?
Mm-hmm.
Before they are already on the list.
Yeah, I think that's a wonderful question. One of, so the change in workflow that I referred to earlier, one of the changes, um, and and I will ju- just to give you some context here, um my own child, what's designated as chronically absent while I was in the middle of the CDE learning cohort on reducing chronic absenteeism. So, um so yes, so um and I, and that, I was not in this school district, but in any case, having been through that experience as a parent, um yeah, I'd say communication is really an issue. Um and so then, when we looked into our empathy interviews, spoke to our school staff, others, we found that communication was also an issue here in our school district. So one of the changes we made to the workflow is that at seven days absent, regardless of excused or unexcused, um we've asked, we've asked principals to designate somebody in their building who will make personal contact. So a phone call, this, you know, what, uh, stopping, you know, when they come for the pickup after school, a personal contact um that is not from office staff to say, hey, is everything okay? We missed your kiddo, what can we do to help? So that's an example of something that the team identified as we kind of went through this year or two of research, um to say, we don't want it to hit, well, you hit ten days, it's already a lot of school missed. Um we wanna have that contact a little bit sooner and have it be in a way that's hopefully comes across as supportive and not punitive. Um so that's one example. Uh the positive attendance campaign we're engaged in is another example of how we can do that. So um our tagline is here today, ready for tomorrow. Um and so we have asked our schools um to have fun with that, right? Spartans here today, ready for tomorrow, dragons here today, ready for tomorrow. And and put that tagline on pictures of all the cool things that are happening in their schools. Um we uh with some support from communications, we've made posters for every school that has shows graduates, you know, tossing their caps here today, ready for tomorrow. And then has our Thompson um uh mission statement in it. Um and then we are working with our, my positive attendance um team, communications, and then designees at the schools to do social media campaigning. Um every school has a webpage to encourage attendance, so, you know, trying to come in it from that that communication side and then also just get the information to families sooner and more clearly of what school our kiddos have actually missed. Um I will say that we have learned a lot about the capabilities of Infinite Campus, Frontline, and Blackboard to help us with this project. And I just really wanted to thank um members of Kelly's team, um you know, Colin has helped with this, um members of Mike's team. This has been quite the effort to say, how could we communicate clearer, more often, more supportively, um and kind of leverage all those things? Uh the other thing I wanted to mention is that um, I don't know if you're all aware that the, that there's a change in the magistrate at the Justice Center for Laramie County. So part of this project that we've engaged in was actually to work alongside the previous magistrate to change what was happening when two students were going to truancy court. And unfortunately, um she left the Justice Center and has moved on and there's a new magistrate. We have a meeting coming up with the new magistrate to try, kind of start again, um because we have pretty clear data that taking students to truancy court previously was not effective and is very expensive. Um and they would improve attendance while there and then as soon as it was over, it didn't, right? So um so I'm looking forward to connecting with the new magistrate and kind of taking another run at it. But I did want to um acknowledge that there's communication all along the way. Why it, why, why would you want to be here? Are classes engaging, you know, of that, that, that pr- the prevention piece of it, intervening early? And then when all of that, unfortunately, in some cases, it's just not going to work, that that other element is effective as well. Um so we're really sorry to, that our previous magistrate left, but looking forward to meeting our new magistrate and seeing what comes out of that partnership.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
Amy, did you ever get?
Oh, Amy, thank you.
Um, no, some of my questions have been um asked. Um, wanted to say the, I don't know if all schools have it now, but the new emails, um like LHS attendance at attendance.
Yeah.
You can email your attendance notes. Is is that at all of the schools now?
That's good.
Because it's new at Erwin and it they told me that they have it at Loveland. Um, but Erwin just put that out. I don't know if it's at all schools, but that is super helpful. So that should be blasted out because if you're like me, you're doing your parent stuff at eleven o'clock at night and you can just email all of that and you don't have to, I mean, that has been so helpful to email attendance stuff. So again, Erwin just announced that in their um news, Wildcat newsletter. Um, I know Loveland has it. So that's helpful. And then providers can also email stuff to that attendance line. So that's been um super helpful. So put that in your um plug. My question is, um, just wanna make sure that like um IEPs are looped in for if kids have special days or times part of their IEPs that they're not being dinged for.
Right.
Cause um some specialized folks are getting calls and attendance, um reminders that they're on the attendance list when it's an IEP.
Mm-hmm.
That days off are part of the IEP, but they're on the attendance list.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yeah, so so one of the
So we're getting calls.
One of the things that we found um with some of the work we've done so far this school year is that some of the programming um in the kind of the backend about when when should a notice go out?
Right.
Some of that has to be um adjusted, which was Kelly's team's amazing in figuring that out for us.
Yeah. For sure, it's a lot. Yeah.
So so and as we hit, as we get further into school year, we're hitting the next notices.
Yeah, yeah.
And so that we're finding where, oh, we thought it was all set up correctly, but have to make this level adjustment.
Mm-hmm.
So we appreciate people's patience to figure that out.
Yeah.
The other thing though that we've found is that um it you know, I think we've had a few situations where in um people were not clearly documenting um special needs, medical related absences. And so in it we're working closely with my positive attendance team and our special educators and whatnot to make sure that that's more clear. Um, I would say along the way, probably some people would be like, wait, now we have now we have to do it this way.
Sure.
Um, but part of the reason for that is that we need to be sure that we're being held accountable
Yeah.
to meeting all of our students' needs.
Mm-hmm.
And so our worry is that if that is not properly documented, um that we couldn't ensure that accountability to meeting all students' needs. So um I I'm that is definitely something that we're continuing to work on. One of the changes to the workflow that we created was a notification process for school teams to be able to send kind of like the email you were talking about to the positive, uh my positive attendance folks who have a lot of experience in the kind of more complicated absences um to say, we're not sure how to code this. We're not sure how to respond to this, we're not sure how to support it
Sure.
and to make it easier to get that support and help.
Mm-hmm.
And they and they are, they work very closely with the specialty coordinators for all of our schools.
I think that's good because sometimes, you know, I mean, we're all dealing with a lot, right? But when you get that email, it's just like, oh my god, that's that one more thing that is going to completely send me over the edge. I've turned in the the note. I've turned in that's that reoccurring absence. I've turned in, they have the IEP that says my child is, you know, got like, so just wanna, yeah, but I understand those workflows are are challenging. Um.
I I do think s- one of the things that's important to me is that as a parent, if the state is considering my student chronically absent, I wanna know that. And in some of these cases, even with the excused absences, it it is tipping over that ten percent line.
Mm-hmm.
And as a parent, I would wanna know that.
Right.
Um, and so I think that's another piece where we have to look at how is that being communicated? So that that is coming across as supportive and like, hey, this is just a notice, like, you know, not not that anybody's doing anything wrong.
And that early notification and that, yeah.
So I I really appreciate that feedback.
And I think, you know, the getting an email with some of that strong language is jarring, right? Because you again, you don't know if you open up that email at nine o'clock on a weekday or if you open it up at eleven o'clock at night and there's nobody to, you know, and it's just me, myself and I. And there's, you know, oh my god, my kid is has this new label, it it, you know, it's a lot sometimes.
Mm, thank you for sharing that.
Okay.
I just wanna add real quickly, as another person in the room whose child has been recognized as being chronically absent or chronically absent this school year and got the email, um.
Where are you going? You're joining the club.
Yeah, I really feel like we needed to.
Uh, yeah, we're all part of this club. Um, all of the, everything you all have shared is the exact reason why absences are a challenge across the country. It's not a simple thing to fix because there's so much nuance to student absences.
Yeah.
And um I I think the policy, we're never gonna write the perfect policy to meet all of the things that are out there, all the variances that are out there.
No.
I think that what really matters is how we execute the policy, how we work closely with families as students do these things.
Yeah.
Because mine also had a couple illnesses and then there was activities. So then all of a sudden I was getting these emails and I was like, hi, I'm a total failure. So I get it. Uh, it's not, it's not, it's not easy, but I appreciate the work that you guys are doing because you're trying to do it the right way
Yeah, absolutely.
and balance like what's best for kids, but also what the state's putting on us to say we have to do.
States are.
And there's sometimes not a great answer for those two questions.
No, except for that I would love to go talk to them about it. I feel really bad that you got it, but I have no problem telling them. So I I'm not kidding about that because it's not okay, it's not okay that this creates the challenges that it creates for the kids who are most at risk and vulnerable and and that we wanna help with this policy, right? And that, so thank you for trying to bridge that gap for us. I really appreciate you.
The other thing I would s- say to the board would be if there's specific feedback on the policy, like you think specifically this is
For sure.
could be changed, please send those our ways between now and the next reading so that we can try to incorporate any specific recommendations that you think might make this better.
I mean, the only thing I would say, sort of relating back to my question and now realizing that the vast majority of us are in the same situation,
Law.
is that if the state allows, I think there should be a a way that you become no longer chronically absent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And you're no longer have to meet those like extra requirements. Once you, once you fall behind like the ten percent
That there's a new, there's a newness.
On once you fall below the ten percent threshold, again, you go back to being, you know, a normal attendee.
Yeah.
Right.
Just a regular, just a regular kid.
Not for a regular kid.
Just a regular, yeah. Right, so I don't know, like I said, if the if I think that's something that I would I I would appreciate having in there if if we're legally allowed to do that.
Kids fresh start.
Mm-hmm.
Mm.
Yeah, I made a note to to see, is it our intention would be that that would be addressed to the support plan? And I appreciate the feedback that um that that is not necessarily clear in this.
Mm-hmm.
So uh I I will take a look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I have a couple of additional questions as a result of hearing comments and feedback from from my colleagues. And I'm really glad we've had this discussion because these are things I didn't think of when I looked at the policy. But first I wanna say that sitting here, I just said this to Alexander, I'm feeling left out.
Yeah, go ahead, kids, yeah. Kids are gone.
So the first one is, um, this policy is designed to relate to K twelve? Or pre-K twelve?
Pre-K twelve.
Pre-K twelve, regular ed and special education. Can a policy actually relate to K twelve, regular ed and special education? I'm not trying to be a wise guy. Are you understanding my question? Is this possible to create a single policy that actually does this?
I think that that's one of the things we were attempting to do, but we did not feel was super clear in the previous policy. So for instance, you'll notice um uh in the tardy section, I mean, there's this line, tardy policies including the maximum amount of time a student may be late to class before the non-appearance is designated as an absence shall be aligned by level. For example, elementary schools shall maintain aligned tardy procedures as shall secondary schools. So what we were wanting to put in here is to say, we need to acknowledge that those are going to be different by level,
Okay.
but they're not going to be different by school, right?
Yes.
And so so you'll if i- i- if you use that lens of that question, which is a great question, I think you'll s- s- you'll you'll see some places where we try to find that line of saying, we're gonna acknowledge this is gonna look different in some cases.
Okay.
But it's not gonna look different in all the cases, right?
All right.
And then um I would also um acknowledge um Colin's work on the excuse absence list
Uh-huh.
to ensure that we are covering um absence excuses that are required to uh prevent discrimination and other issues. Um, and so that speaks to are are we making sure that we're thinking of our students with special needs and other and other items that she brought up?
Okay.
Um, that that being said, as Dr. Heller said, I mean, this this is one of the mo- I was talking with the chronic absenteeism relationship about this, like the difference between complicated situations and complex situations. Right now, attendance is complex in our school district, right? Not only are there lots of parts to the system, but the outcome is not predictable.
Mm-hmm.
And it needs to be more predictable. So we want this to be complicated so that we acknowledge all of these different pieces that we've been talking about tonight, but some of this needs to be a little bit more predictable. For instance, I'll just point back to that tardy example. We we have have to have the same tardy expectations at all for high schools, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, locking ourselves into what that definition is in board policy is probably not a great idea because much of the workaround attendance is this very interesting intersection of kind of systems adaptive work and technical work. And so um if we put in in here, for instance, t- kids are gonna be kind of absent after ten minutes of tardy, well, what about the classes that are sixty minutes in length versus forty-five minutes in length versus ninety minutes in length versus Monday that are different than Wednesday, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So instead, trying to call out, it needs to be aligned by level, which then allows a team to work with our schools to define that.
Okay.
The same is true of the partnership with our special education team to make sure that when we implement these things, we're doing so with sensitivity to um our students with special needs.
Okay. Thank you for that answer. Um, it addressed my concern and listening to you say that um consideration will be given based on level and perhaps on nature of education, and I'm talking about general ed and and special ed. I think that's a very good answer and I think that's a very good idea. My next question is, does this new policy result in earlier and or more parent notification?
So I would not say the policy does. Um, what I would say is that we realized when reviewing all of this, that we needed earlier communication. And so we've already been working on that this year, which is why some of you have received more information than would have in the past.
Okay. All right.
Because not only was it not early enough, it was it was also not consistent. And so some families were aware that their students had missed certain months of school and other families were not. And then once they hit a certain point, it was kind of a surprise that, and that's that unpredictability that is just not acceptable and we need to be more clear on. So um we felt that 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 part of it did not need to be um spelled out as much in the board policy because we did it on our hands.
Okay.
Um, however, we're clearly gonna notice that the points required, what those those points define in state law, right? Where the chronic absenteeism and habitual Turuncie.
Okay. And my last question I think will be um a pretty easy yes, no. And this may actually be something that wouldn't be part of the policy. Maybe this would be in the regulation or maybe it's not in either. Is there enough inclusion of the various supports that are needed at different steps in the process? When Dawn was talking, I that I was hearing um questions related to supports. And so are those part of the policy or are those available elsewhere? Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a great question. And um if that's an area of particular interest to to the board, if if you wouldn't mind looking closely at the exhibit, the allocation of school attendance responsibilities?
Okay.
Cause that is, it's definitely called out some in the policy, but we particularly wanted to call that out um in the exhibit.
Okay.
And I'll point you to an example of that. We added that district responsibility for school attendance section. Number one on the list is to provide timely evidence-based guidance for supporting students and families with regular school attendance. Um, so we added that into the list uh to try to call out exactly what we're talking about a little more clearly. If it is not coming out clearly enough in the exhibit or the policy, I would certainly want that feedback cause that was that was our intention, was to make that more clear.
Okay. Uh, just a final comment. I didn't spend as much time looking at the exhibit as I did at the policy. So it's possible it's there and that I just didn't see it. So I I will look at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So did you encompass and include all of four one, four two, four three, the the? So when you guys come back on next meeting and we have to vote on each one of these, um I need somebody to help me make sure that I'm not deleting or just letting some policies slip away because, yeah, so when we.
Yeah, just like the recognition that we are as part of this deleting a deleting a section and pouring that all into one policy now.
Yeah.
So there will be a specific vote on the deletion as well as the new policy in general.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll make sure because I did not realize that we were changing um like the J H and stuff in there
combined.
and then we were changing from a regulation to exhibit. So we'll make sure that's noted as well.
Yeah. So we just have to make sure that it's, cause it'll take a lot of, I can't think of an easy way to combine those when we do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, we can.
Okay, now are you sticking around for A C or is that?
Yeah.
Either is not me.
Okay.
But I do wanna stick around. It's not at this table.
Okay, who's joining us? Okay, Colin and Michelle, okay?
Colin.
Bless you.
Thank you, you guys. We appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
All right, so this one, I assume it probably goes from four point four to four point nine, all of the A C and into that, okay?
Okay, I will go ahead and introduce.
Okay.
But I will not stay up here. I will I will give them space. Um, so um again, good evening, Sarah Rasmus and Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services. And um this evening, we have Valerie Laura Black, who is our Director of Human Resources, and Colin Neig, who is our um Complaints Coordinator. And they will be reviewing the policies, the A C policies. These were made due to revisions that that came through and we needed to address those revisions within our policy. So um this is definitely a collaborative effort. And you'll see that as they talk through the changes that are being made, um how we are working together to make sure that we are addressing um the requirements in these policies in a way that is hopefully in the best interest of our staff, students and community.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, so thank you all for having us. Um, I'm gonna start kinda walking a little bit through the memo that was provided to summarize cause there are quite a few um policy changes. So at a ten thousand foot level, there are basically three changes that have happened in the last five-ish years that require us to change this set of policies. The first one is the change in federal Title Nine law. So if you're not familiar, Title Nine governs sex discrimination um and sex equity in publicly funded schools. Um, there's a series of regulations that were passed in the twenty twenty or in the year twenty twenty. Um, those were replaced in the year twenty twenty four. Um, and then those regulations were enjoined January of twenty twenty five, which believe or not was this year. I thought that was last year. It's been a long year.
Oh, it was. Okay.
So, and those regulations are like very different uh in terms of how they wanted complaints of sexual discrimination investigated, um how resolutions were to be made, who could even make the decision. So pretty substantive revisions. While that was happening, um Colorado in twenty twenty three passed a law uh addressing bullying on the basis of a protected class status. Um, that's not totally commensurate with what's required in Title Nine, but it's very similar and brings a lot more protections for other types of discrimination um for students in the school setting. That was effective uh in twenty twenty four, so we needed to make those changes and now we have them uh in front of us. The third thing that's going on um all this time, consistent between all these different laws, is kind of a changing in perspective on handling pregnancy. So pregnancy-related issues are addressed explicitly under Title Nine. Um, and there between those twenty twenty regulations and twenty twenty four regulations, there was actually quite a bit of consistency um between a recognition that pregnancy itself is not a disability, pregnancy-related disabilities are and they need to be handled through the appropriate framework. Um, and that because pregnancy has a disability. Um, and that because pregnancy has a disproportionate impact on sex, that it is a sex equity issue that is addressed under Title IX and some of these other areas. Um, and we had not made any, any changes to pregnancy policies since, like, two thousand in the school district. So, it was time to kind of bring them all together all at one time. Um, and since we were bringing attendance, which is impacted by students that are also pregnant, we thought it made sense to kind of bundle them together. So, those are all the, the things that are going on in the world. The specific changes, uh, to the policies are enumerated in that memo, but I would add, um, the big changes. So, we are, we have a lot, uh, if you're not familiar with Title IX, it's a lot of work. Um, there's a lot of intake, a lot of being on call, and it's just too much for one person. So, um, Val and I have worked together very closely, um, and we support the recommendation that we got also from our legal counsel of splitting that role. So that I would be addressing student-to-student complaints, um, through the educational framework that makes more sense, 'cause it's consistent with every other responsibility we have. We have students with disabilities, we govern all those processes. If we have to look at terminal discipline, like suspension expulsion, we already address all those issues. Um, but then having student, or a staff-related issue handed by H.R. So, that is a big change, is to split those.
Yeah.
Um, we, I talked about some of these things, I won't be redundant. Um, we do have, um, an online intake form that's gonna be coming that will streamline reporting. Um, it's already built, I've already seen it. Thanks and shout-out to Matt Beal and the support we've gotten from our tech friends. It is exceptional, allows people to report directly to us, so if for some reason they feel like they can report to a staff member or a principal, they can report to us. Um, we al- that, and that is ready to go upon cost of the policy. And that, and then we've also, uh, recognized some of the needs for, for training. Those are set up explicitly under Title IX as responsibility of the Title IX Coordinator. Um, so we've already started working on that, that's reflected in the changed policy. Um, and I think that's, that's really the core of the changes, so I won't belabor the point, because there's a lot of pages, I'm sure there are questions. Can you continue that?
Yep.
Okay, um, there's a lot here, so.
Yeah.
What do you guys need? Uh, do you have more to tell us, or is it just an overview? I need to know what the board members think.
I need the opportunity to ask a few, a few questions.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start with Alexander, if you, yeah, right.
Sure, I'm just, when you ask what we needed, that's what, that's what I need, is the opportunity to ask some questions.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Alexander, do you have questions over, there's, it, there's several things here, 'cause there's the one that is justify A.C.
Right.
Then there's the A.C.R. One, and then A.C.R. two, those stay as regulations, not exhibits?
Right.
Those are regulations, yes.
Okay. And, um, R. three.
Yep.
So, there's a lot in those, so, I guess.
Yeah, I, I mean, so I have a variety of questions on sort of all of the di- a few on each of them.
Okay.
That's, yeah, just, mhm. So I don't know if you wanna just start with, like, the policy itself, the A.C.
Okay, let's, let's just do A.C. first, if we have some, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Um, and so there were a couple, I had sent an email, there were a couple of just sort of, like, wording and grammatical stuff, that I think you guys probably got that, so we don't necessarily need to talk about those.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, but then I do have, the, the, I guess the biggest question I had was that you guys talked about, it said the investigations will be conducted by trained investigators outside of the school buildings, um, in cases of Title IX, an independent decision-maker will be used, blah, blah, blah. So saying it's all gonna be out there, but then in the policy, it says the compliance officers may delegate to district building authorities, administrators the assort- authority to receive, investigate, and resolve complaints filed under this policy. And so, if it's supposed to be all done by an outside person, how then can it be delegated back to an inside person?
Yeah, great question. Um, so, a couple of things. Um, the first, I, like, overview that I would give you is that that's not a plan that we have. Our goal is not to hand this back to admin. They have enough on their plate, um, and it requires extensive training and time. So, we are very aware of that, that is not our intent. Um, but we did, at the advice of legal counsel, keep that provision in. Um, one, because Title IX allows it, it does allow the designation to somebody that is adequately trained and capable of performing that, that function. Um, and, uh, like I said, it's a lot of work. We're splitting it into two of us, and even then, there could be a situation where something happens. There's a lot of parties, or a lot of, uh, investigation that has to occur, where we cannot manage both of them. In which case, we would like to have the flexibility to ask our admin to step in with intensive oversight, lots of ongoing technical support. Um, and that's still to address things that, uh, probably are not Title IX necessarily related, but may fall under, like, A.C.R. one, that CDE harassment, um, which is just student-to-student conduct, which they're familiar with addressing. We would just help them with additional procedural deprocess pieces to make sure that they're satisfying the legal obligations. Uh, but it's not generally something that we're looking to do, um, if we don't have to.
I would just add, I mean, there's a ton of training, to do investigator training, decision-maker training, those, there's very specific trainings for those different roles. I think we've had some conversations that we want to build the capacity of all of our administrators to have a better foundation of understanding around Title IX, to be able to handle investigations appropriately, to be, we're not there yet. Uh, so I think the goal is, these two are gonna take the biggest burden and heavy lift, but I think our g- goal over time is to add capacity for all of our administrators. In every place I've been, administrators have been trained to be investigators, where they actually know the process to go through a Title IX investigation appropriately, and then how to handle that, hand that off to the decision-maker. So, I think that's a goal for us, is to grow that capacity, but we're not there right now.
Yeah. And on the last training point, if I can, we have our training, first training scheduled the day after this policy does pass, to train admin on the very first thing you do when you have that intake, that make sure it gets handled appropriately. So, um, I go wholeheartedly agree and really appreciate the support from, from Dr. Heller on that.
Okay. That's all on that, on Thursday's policy part, that was all I wanted to mention.
Done.
Um, I, do we have to have the names of people in a policy?
Y- yes, excellent question, so, I'm, I know.
I hate it, it's so dumb.
So for Title IX bylaw, yes, you must identify the, uh, Title IX coordinators by name. For the remainder, though, um, we don't, we don't, so like, if we had a Title VI coordinator that addresses race, color, national origin, we don't have to do that. Um, the, um, and we don't have to identify it everywhere. It has to be within the policy that addresses it and prominently on our website and in advertising materials. So, one of the things that you'll know in A.C. is a specific line where the board dir- directs the remainder, or I would start the superintendent, to remove those references from all of our policies, so we don't end up with lots and lots and lots of conflicts that they have in one place, um, that directs other ones to that one place, and that if we have changes to those names, one place, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then I guess the other thing, and I realize I'm not, this is a crystal ball question, but, um, I have a feeling, um, this isn't done changing probably in the very near future. And, so I'm just wondering, in those cases that have came up for our discussion over the last year about discrepancies between these different governing bodies, I, I guess I'm r- I'm concerned that, how difficult it is to navigate that, on top of the, on top of what you guys are already dealing with. And I just wonder i- if this helps that in any way.
Well, uh, I think crystal ball is the right phrase.
Mm-hmm, I know.
Um, I don't know if it's coming. Um, well, I know change is coming, that's a, right? And that, that's inevitable. What I do think is great about this, and I actually would commend CDE on this narrow issue related to twenty-two-one-one-forty-three that addresses those other harassment complaints, it's, that's all an easier one, um, is they have streamlined it in that every allegation of discrimination, harassment follows the same pattern with the same supports. Every kid gets supportive measures that are non-communitarian, don't reasonably burden the person accused, and reads a presumption of innocence, innocence. There is access to impartial investigators and decision-makers if we need it, um, and everyone gets a written resolution with an opportunity to respond. Um, and then there's other due process through it if there is discipline added. So in that sense, even if there are changes, um, our process is way more streamlined now than it ever was before and consistent. Um, I think most of those changes, even if you look, like, federally, between Title IX and the twenty-twenty regs and twenty-twenty-four regs, they were about class cases, to call it explicitly, right? Are students that are transgender or have different gender identity or gender expressions, are those students under A.C.R. one or A.C.R. three? That's what's gonna be the question. And so, in that sense, so if our policies are streamlined, we're following the same approaches. It should not be, um, a big lift for us to change that.
Okay.
So, yeah, alright.
Thank you.
Denise, do you have questions?
And my question was unanswered.
I just need clarification, because when I print this out, I have red, I have blue, and I have some black.
Yep.
And I assume the blue is where you've taken, um, the deleted and rephrased it?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it just a rewrite?
New.
Yeah, right, so.
New language.
It's new?
It was an attempt to make it easier to read.
Okay.
I see how that's going over, if that do. Um, the blue are insertions. There are new things in the policy, reds are omissions, blacks are things that are state consistent.
Okay. Okay, that's what I, is I was trying to sort through all of that, I thought, oh, maybe the blue is just the new. Okay, that's kind of all I have at this point in time, having gone through it so many times. Amy?
Who was asked?
Okay, Stu?
Uh, just one question, and you've seen the questions I, I think probably that I submitted. And the, the question regarding four-point-four is a very simplistic one, but it's one that I think is extremely important. It's very important to me as a board member, because of the number of emails that I get relative to this. And so, my colleagues have not seen my question, so here's my question. Has the revision of policy A.C. been carefully vetted so as to be in complete compliance with requirements set forth in current federal and state law? And I, when I wrote the question, I thought, well, the answer will be yes, but I decided to answer the question, to ask the question anyway, to reinforce how important to me as a board member it is to know that this policy has recently been completely vetted.
Uh, y- yes, and yes again. Um, I cannot tell you the hour-long conversations that we have with our attorneys about, um, going back and forth, right? About managing both best practice and legal requirements, and making sure that we, we were even calibrated on, like, here's all the things that have changed. Uh, and are we even agreeing on interpretation, getting down to the point of case law, right? Are we supported on every part of this? And I think we are.
Okay. That's the answer I was hoping to hear.
So, will the date where it's as revised be added to this one, like it has been to the others?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, anybody else have anything additional on A.C.? Okay, A.C.R. one, okay. And this one is, um, harassment and discrimination investigation procedures for students, and this is regulation. Alright, Dawn, we're gonna start with you, if there's anything that pops up that you have. Nothing? Okay. Denise? I didn't have anything. Stu?
I do have one.
Okay.
My question relates, as you know, to four-point-five and four-point-six. And my question is, is the content of these revisions consistent with the content of our equity policy? And I was curious to have the attorneys look at that, because I also get emails about that.
Yes, uh, they are. Um, I would, in fact, I specifically went through to make sure that the items that are flagged in the equity policy about, um, protected classes and what equity means are consistent, and they are. Um, but I would also add that if they weren't, these would supersede, but they, they are, to the best of my knowledge. So, um, because our equity policy is not something we are necessarily, um, required to have the exact provisions we have, but the ones in the, in these three policies or regulations we do.
But they are consistent?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. My question.
Alexander?
Yeah, so I have a couple. Um, the one also, so I had wondered about on, let me see if I can find it. It says where it talks about the, the reporting party or complainant who files a report in good faith will not be disciplined for any of the following acts, and then lists out a whole bunch of acts, um, if they are con- or well, if I was, if they are connected to the reported incident. And I may have, I may have understood it to myself, actually, in just rereading it, but can you, like, how, explain that to me?
Yeah, absolutely. So, one, uh, that is pulled directly out of state law.
Okay.
Um, so it is in CRS twenty-two-one-one-forty-three, you can go to the site if you'd like. Um, the, um, so it says that you cannot discipline students if they're engaging in misconduct at the time in which a Title IX-related event or a discrimination harassment-related event, um, occurs, and they report that. The reason being that the state legislature believes it is far more important to address the harassment concern than it is to address the other misconduct, whatever it may be. Um, and if we allow students to be disciplined for the misconduct they're doing at that time, they will not report it. And so, that is a policy choice, and it is not directly stated as clearly as it is in state law, um, as it is in Title IX. But it's also in Title IX, because Title IX states that you can only offer supportive measures to, to students. Until there's a finding of responsibility, those must be non-punitive. Um, and so, and then, there's retaliation provision that says you cannot discipline students participating in the process. And often, there are OCR cases that say, if you go back and discipline for the other misconduct, even at the end, you will be found to be retaliating and discouraging reporting.
Okay, that's fine, and that makes sense. I think the way I read it the first time was that, like, if a person made a complaint, then they could just, like, go off to the else and do whatever they wanted.
Do whatever they want for a while.
Like, that was, but now, now, that, like, that's what I said when I was reading it through, I was like, oh, I think it means, like, at that specific time.
I like to give, I mean, specific examples, as being a building and district administrator, where we found out situations had occurred that would have fallen under Title IX, and when we talked to the student, like, why didn't you not report this? They said, because there were things we were doing when this happened, that we thought we would have gotten in trouble for if we would have reported it. Um, Title IX, it's like, so if your two kids are vaping in the bathroom, and then there's a harassment incident that occurs, we want the kid to come and report to us, and no, they're not gonna be in trouble for the vaping, because we want them to report about the harassment.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Yes, that makes much more sense. Okay. And then, why, why is there no, like, appeal option?
Yeah, excellent question. Um, one, the easiest answer just for A.C.R. one, uh, is there's not a requirement to have one, um, under, um, under state law. Um, maybe it's the lawyer in me, um, I, I, process is good, more process always is not always better. Um, and there are reasons why we wouldn't want those things. The other reason I, or the other thing I would add is, um, a lot of these different harassment procedures can overlap, right? Let's say it's filed under Title IX, um, and that ends up being dismissed for whatever reason, we handle it under A.C.R. one separately. Um, they can fight that dismissal under a, under the Title IX regulations, 'cause there is an appeal mechanism. So, there are in some limited cases, even though it's not explicitly called out here. Um, the other reason why, um, is that consistent with Title IX, the appeals bases there are very narrow as well. There are three exact reasons you can appeal, and they are bias for the investigator, uh, a procedure or regularity that actually affected the outcome, or, um, that there was newly discovered evidence that wasn't available there at the time that they were report. So, uh, not having an appeal in that context is not novel, because they're very narrow anyway on the timeline. And the last thing I would say is, technically, under our board policies, if you look at, like, K.E. and K.E.-R., um, we have an appeals process for every policy violation. If somebody wanted to file it, those policies, if you look at them, allow people to file complaints with the board for not following. Um, and so, if, for example, um, we were investigating, someone said you did not follow the, the appointment of an inde- uh, independent investigator, they could bring it through that avenue and still get a resolution.
And then I guess the other option would be that they could still file a complaint through, if, if, say, this is found, there, this, if they're not happy with the outcome of this, then they can still file a complaint through the state or through, whatever, there are other avenues available, yeah?
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you, that's all for that one.
Okay, Dawn, did you get a chance to ask about that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the next one, then, is, uh, A.C.R. two, and we'll start with Denise. Anything different? Is, first of all, is there anything different you would share with us from, no?
This relates to the procedure for heavily employee-related investigating.
I don't think so, yeah, the procedure, yes, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I don't, I, well, yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything.
Okay. Amy? Stu?
Just one. This is listed in the agenda as a new policy.
Yep.
Uh, previously, was the content covered anywhere in policy, or is this brand-new, that we've never had before?
Um, that's a great question. Um, so, uh, a couple of things. A.C.R. two title is not new. We had an A.C.R. two before, that was the Title IX procedures, and now A.C.R. three. So, that's- So, that's a revision. Um, technically, A C R two then would be the, the new one addressing just staff, uh, because those Title IX regs have moved to A C R three. However, title or staff complaints, staff discrimination stuff was, it has always been addressed directly by G B A and G V A A. Um, though these are different, uh, regulations and they're all put in one spot. So, I don't know how to answer it. I think it's new. Uh, it certainly is in the adoption. We're adding something, but it's not, um, they were addressed previously in policy.
Okay, I'm fine with, with that answer. Thank you.
Alexander?
Um, yes, just one second. Um. Oh, yes, some of the consequences were suspension or expulsion, which I was wondering about if this is supposed to be for non-students.
I'll read that.
No, we'll fix that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dawn?
That's it.
Denise, no, we start with you. Um, you said J B?
G B A.
G B A. Do we have to go back and take that back now as well?
We do. We have a few other, and that's not just for the staff, and we also have some other varial antiquated policies that we need to get rid of.
Okay. Right. Okay.
So, it's the plan we will bring in December, a number of policies for retirement and some for revision related to the policies. Once these are approved in, in November, then we will bring some to retire and revise that need to be revised just because there's some conflicts that are being created with these new policies, so.
But we need to wait until.
We were gonna bring them all to you at the same one point, but this is complicated enough, uh, so we're gonna bring the rest of those in December.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So, then we have A C R three. Starts within definitions. What do we need to know? Anything special that you've changes wise is just?
It's the specific Title IX one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is brand new.
Oh, this is all new. Okay. All right.
Brand new policy.
Amy, anything you wanna start with? By the time you read through each one of these, they all started looking the same. Can you imagine what it was like?
I know. See, they go boom.
I forgot. Yeah. Yeah. Stu, did you have anything?
Are we talking about four point seven? Yes, I already asked that question.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay. So, I guess I have sort of, I have a lot of little questions. So, I think, I mean, you may have said this, but can you just reiterate why this new one was created to separate Title IX from, from the others?
Yeah, we just did not have the, um, so if you actually look at the titling and the things that were in G B A, G B A that address staff discrimination issues, um, they didn't call out explicitly Title IX, um, mostly because they're actually doing Title VII, which is the employment part of the Civil Rights Act that, giving it really complicated, I promise. Um, so, we moved them all in one spot. So, all the discrimination stuff is in one place, um, and that's why it was added there.
Okay. And so Title IX had to, but separate from the others. So, A C, so one was students for harassment and discrimination. Two was employees or community members for harassment and discrimination. And then three is Title IX because it's handled a little bit differently than the other ones are.
Right. Absolutely.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and then, yeah, and then the others were just sort of stylistic things, so that's fine.
Dawn?
Good.
Denise?
Good.
Okay. So, that takes us to A C E one and E two basically. So, do, Stu, do you have any questions on these?
I do not.
You do not? Okay.
I was trying to, so, can you, so A C E, so did this, well, I guess why are there only two exhibits if there's the three? Can you, pardon me, tell me that?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so A C E one is our nondiscrimination statement and the, and the names that we're talking about simplify where those people, where those reports go to.
Okay.
And people can contact directly required to have them in Title IX.
Okay.
They identify that A C R one handles student issues, R two, employee and, uh, employee and so forth, and R three being Title IX. Um, E two is the complaint form.
Okay.
Yep. And that, and as, as a note, we, that is for all complaints, for any of the policies, so that people don't have to know, oh, I got to have a separate A C R two complaint form. They just filed a complaint form. We helped them get the sort of where it falls and then.
Including Title IX?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I know that I had, I had forwarded on some information about a question around specifically ADA complaints
Yeah.
and specifically for community members if they have it. Can you address that at all? Because I know the board didn't get that information yet.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. So, um, an omission from, uh, A C E, A C E two that we will be fixing, um, is that it does identify these, uh, under Title IX, you are required at taking advice from anyone that is a public, that actually applies not just to Title IX, it applies to all civil rights laws. Anyone can notify us that we're not following the law. Um, and so, what we had put in here, because we were doing this in the context of Title IX, was the, um, student Title IX coordinator and the public and employee Title IX coordinator. We did it for Title IX, we didn't do it for ADA. We didn't do it for Title VI. That's our fault, so we're gonna fix that. Um, so make it clear that if you are a member of the public, you report the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that'll ease some angst for us. All right. Anybody have anything else that they want Colin to, or Val to address? Colin is just very knowledgeable about all of this. Well, I, I can tell, just sitting here listening to him, yes.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, Colin.
Yeah, you don't agree to talk to him.
And that, yes, absolutely.
I just wanna say that these two have put in a ton of work on these policies and these procedures and all this thing. I mean, I, I can't tell you how much time, and even going to additional training so that they can, you know, you know, Val's done a ton of things to increase her own knowledge and feel like she can best support employees in the Title IX process. And I just wanna thank also the board for taking the time to read through all of this and come up with specific questions and feedback, because that's really, really helpful, so, yeah.
So, just real quick, so the form people will be able to get, but then there's also going to be an online version and either one.
Same questions.
Yep.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. So, they, and those are routed confidentially to us depending on who the, the people, they actually go in and add, um, complainants and respondents. They identify who these people are, they identify their staff or not, and they go directly to us, so they follow the same couple of.
Denise, I'm not sure I heard your question. Could you repeat your question?
Just, so, I mean, there's the paper form.
Yes.
But then there's also an electronic submission process.
Uh-huh.
Just wanted to make sure that they followed the same kind of flow.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
That's a great question.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Very, very much.
Dawn, thanks. All right. We have just a couple of little more things. Um, four point ten is the District Accountability Committee. In other words, it's the D A C membership that we've been talking about a lot. So, welcome, Sarah.
Why, thank you. Um, so Assistant Assistant Superintendent of Labor Services. And yes, this evening I am presenting, um, on behalf of the District Accountability Committee, our, um, our membership list for approval. And so this goes along with, um, state statute as well as, um, a board policy regulation that we have. So, we present these names and then, um, really would be the next board meeting we would vote on these numbers.
Did anybody have questions over anything on this and how this was done?
I have a couple.
Okay.
One is, from the looks of it, nobody dropped off. We just have people who expressed interest in joining. Is that correct? Am I reading it right?
That no one dropped off, like from last year?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I honestly do not know if, if, if the members are the same. I would have, I, and I can get that for you.
Okay. I, I would love to know that just to see, um, and then, um,
Okay.
that will be very helpful for the next question if you haven't already done it, and I'm really sorry, which is, um, making sure that we still ha- have our ma- have kept the makeup that we have to have as far as, um, I mean, I know we do more than we need to, so I think we're fine no matter what, but, you know, the state, the statute has things we have to have and you have to make sure that the balance doesn't get off the counter.
And I haven't.
I wish I had, you, you give this to you.
Thank you. I haven't seen any students at the last two meetings, um, as well.
Right. There's still student membership?
So, we did have students at one point, or one student.
Yes. Mm-hmm. We did, and we are, um, we have talked about reaching out. I know, um, Laura Copeland was, was planning on reaching out to try to gain some student members.
Oh.
Um, just to be, to, because that, um, for those of you who has been at D A C with the student membership, they are, one, a delight to have and very insightful, and so we do need to make sure that we have students who are joining. But we have yet to be able to get any.
I do wonder whether, even if we could maybe see if any advisory council students would be interested in maybe serving in that capacity? Or maybe all of us who have students who are habitually absent, we could make.
They have to go to D A C.
Oh, that actually might be the kind of carrot and stick we need.
There you go.
Although the kids who do it love it. That's what it has been so great about it.
Yeah.
Okay. And I do think we have some that would be interested from our.
I do too. I do too.
Yeah. That's where they came from last year.
Yeah, we've got a few that I think would be very interested, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's interesting to, to, um, watch the dynamics of D A C with the co-chairs working together. Um, they're, uh, when you look at, I can't get my list to come up and that I can even see it for some reason.
That's right here, Barb.
Hmm?
That's right here.
I know, but I.
Yeah.
Oh.
With Ryan and Bria, it's, it's interesting. They, Bria has really made sure that she has a say and a voice in what's happening, and it's been really good to, to watch that happen. Mm-hmm.
And, and our, um, D A C chairs are, they are very involved in the planning of D A C.
Yes.
So, it's, it's, it's been, it's been wonderful. I mean, it's.
They are.
It has been.
We do some, some strong planning at the forefront just to make sure that we have an understanding of their ideas and what they're hoping for, which they also, um, gained input from the Accountability Committee themselves. And then we work with them and then we kind of put something together and get feedback and they've, they've done really sharply.
Yeah. All right. Questions? Anything more? Stu?
Yes, and I sent you this question, um, Sarah. I didn't see the name of the, the Board of Education liaison listed in the membership roster. Is that, will that be filled after the election and we all have new liaisons? Or I was curious as to why a board member's name is not listed?
Is, well, that's a good question, and I don't know, but I, I don't know the answer, but I don't.
But Dawn?
I know it is, but I was curious as to what.
Yeah.
Cause I don't think they're like actually.
They're not a members.
I don't think they're members.
No, we're not.
Yeah.
The liaisons are not considered members.
Cause, yeah. We have no voting.
No.
No, I know that.
So, that's why, yeah.
Okay.
Some committees do it, like each committee does it differently. That's one that we've done for a while now, where the board rep isn't. Instead of a member. I don't know if that statute or just how we've been doing it, but that's how it's been for a while.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So, okay. Anything else? No?
Just to refresh my memory, we voted last year to make it so everybody's just a one-year, like, term, right? And we re, that's why we re-approve every year, because we had like that overlapping two-year thing, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
Yes, so they had to go through and fill out a form and everyone did, so they, they needed to state their interest.
Okay.
Oh, to read.
Reapply, isn't it?
Reapply. Okay. Oh, perfect. Okay, great. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sarah, parent, community, and employee, everyone had to reapply?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Okay.
All right. Any others? Did you guys have comments or questions? Thanks, Sarah.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Last item that we have is our standard action consent items.
Yep.
Um, contracts greater than fifty, um, any other items we might have? Will there be maybe donations or anything? Nothing?
I don't think so.
I would point out there's a really cool one on the contracts over fifty, the virtual cadaver table.
Yes.
It is actually the coolest thing. I sp- if you ever worked in, you know, as a, as a college student, I actually had to work with real cadavers. This will be much better for our kids and smells.
So, just.
Can they have it smelled formaldehyde?
Notice and hurt.
Yes, it is a large table where you can literally virtually turn over the cadaver. Now, you're not touching it, but you can see everything.
And, and, but, but it feels like you are, yeah.
Yeah, and so it's, it'll be at Thompson Currie Campus in the E M T program.
Where is it at? Oh, cool.
So, we have said once it's in and going, we will invite some people to come out and check it out, because it is a very cool thing. Uh, and it'll, our rooms will not smell like cadavers.
Formaldehyde.
So, it's one.
That's the best ever.
Yes.
Okay.
I can still smell the shirt.
Cool.
Yeah.
Like all these years later, I still smell the shirt.
All right. Anybody else have anything else?
Do you want my very brief Casby report?
Oh, yes, you were gonna have a, yes, sorry, Stu.
I said I would have probably a one or two sentence Casby report unless something blew up.
Can we do one?
Well, nothing has blown up that I'm aware of, so just to put on your calendars that we will be meeting with wha- wh- which, whichever legislators would like to meet with us prior to our board meeting, our regular board meeting on December seventeenth. At this point, only one person has confirmed. Uh, I'll be in touch with the other three, uh, actually the end of this week and basically say we'd love to have you join us, um, but if we only have the one, and the one has actually gotten back to me and said, very interested in communicating with you, then maybe with just that one. Okay, so that's just an update on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Okay, I'm gonna declare this meeting adjourned.